Good evening, everyone. This is the November 7th Special Committee of the Whole Meeting of the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce, November 17, 2017.
Jerry, excuse me, but this is not the Chamber of Commerce?
Special Committee of, I just had a meeting at the Chamber. Special Committee of the Whole Meeting of the DeKalb City Council. And I was going to announce that Alderman Favor was not going to join us tonight.
They rushed back from.
Surprise. Tony, in his zealousness for service to our community and the Special Committee of the Whole of the DeKalb City Council is joining us. Thank you. Now, I think we're all here. I'm going to ask City Clerk Sue Herman to call the role, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Finnucan?
Here.
Marquardt?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Verbeck?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
He present.
Our one item of business for this Special Committee of the Whole Meeting is the discussion of the FY 2018 Proposed Annual Budget. There will be a number of speakers speaking with us tonight, but we're going to let our Finance Director Molly Talkington, please lead us in the proper direction. Molly?
Thank you. We'll just continue where we were from last night. So, in just a minute, we'll have our presentation and let me get to the appropriate slide for this evening because we didn't, all the safety discussions last night, now we're moving on to development. Hold on. See, we covered a lot of ground last night, so I'm going to bring this slide back up again because it's a good reminder that the taxable property in the city is growing and it's through some of the efforts that you guys have been supportive of. You know, you can see if you walk downtown that, you know, the facade improvement that you see with the Sun Dog Project, the Cornerstone Project in Plaza de Kalb, and that's helping move that taxable property base upwards. So, I'm going to let Joellen take over on our key priority for development.
Actually, Molly, can you back up to that prior slide for me for just a minute? First of all, I'm really grateful that you guys decided to delay tonight's or yesterday's conversation to tonight because I was really hungry last night and it had been a long day, so I feel a little more energized today and ready to talk you through some of our department's successes and where we hope to go from here. I wanted to bring this chart, or asked Molly to put this chart up because this shows the trend line that's been happening in our overall assessed value. And every time we bring a project to you for consideration, we talk about that project's impact on assessed value and why that's important to the community. And I think that message gets a little lost because the whole property tax system is very hard for people to understand. Am I, there we go. Okay. Nice and close. So, one of the things I wanted to point out with this graph is obviously this is showing from 2008 or so, at the beginning of the graph on the left, where we started from in that long, several-year decline in our overall assessed value. What does that mean? You know, where do we go? And what does this complicated tax formula mean? I've struggled for a long time to try and describe that and it gets very wordy and very hard for people to understand, and so I keep looking for, you know, how can I communicate this message better? And one thing that I wanted to point out, and it's not an exact science and I don't want people to accuse me of bringing this out and trying to mislead, but I want to point out what the tax rates were in each one of those years, beginning in 2008, and just show that, you know, when we have a higher assessed value, we have a lower tax rate with all other things being equal. So, in 2008 and 2009, so 2008 taxes that were payable in 2009, the tax rate was 8.42% in DK 12, which was one of the major taxing districts within the city. I'm going to run through the numbers year by year and to show you what that tax rate went up on a year-by-year basis. So, we started at 8.42, we went to 8.59, 9.2, 9.86, 11.1, 13.07, 13.3, and that's when we got to 14 and 15. And then, right when you see the first tick going up, we went from 13.3 down to 12.64. Again, there's a lot of complicated things that go into those tax rates, but I just wanted to use that to illustrate that, thank you, that one of the things that we constantly are struggling with now in our economic development efforts is that very high tax rate. And it's not, you know, not only for the residents who are paying that high tax rate and the resulting tax bills, but it makes it very difficult for us when we're dealing with new prospective businesses to market ourselves when we have that high of a tax rate. They compare that rate and sometimes they don't look at the total amount they're paying. That rate is very important. So, we want to get, we want to continue to grow our assessed value back in that positive direction and get back up to where we started to so that assumably, again, all other things being equal, we can begin to lower that tax rate. So, again, I know that's oversimplified, but I keep trying to come up with ways to describe the importance of improving your overall assessed value. So, how do we do this? ComDev has spent the last year realigning our resources. I know one of the prior budgets, when ComDev first came back as a department after being disbanded in 2008 and 2009, and the theme of that budget was realigning resources. That's what we've really been doing all year long. ComDev is a lean department and we do rely heavily on a whole lot of part-time staff. So, in the materials I presented to you, I think I show that I have seven full-time staff and eight part-time staff assigned to my department. One of those full-time staffs is actually a sworn fire officer who serves as our Fire Prevention Officer, but he is in the building with us and takes advantage of the resources that we have, both from HR Green and now from our Chief Building Official. One of the other really important aspects of the resources that we have available in community development is some of the other resources that are available to us from the manager's office. And this is unique in my career. I've never really had an opportunity to draw on other resources from other departments. Patty Hoppenstadt, the Assistant City Manager, has been instrumental in planning-type functions for our department over the last year. She's worked very extensively on both the STEAM project, managing that project, as well as the Annie Glidden North Revitalization Plan Project. Other management analysts and interns that are part of the manager's office are also very heavily dependent on by our department when we need them. So, if we have a need to do specific research topics or have people spend time on things that, you know, just involves sitting down for an hour period of time without an interruption and a meeting or a meeting with a developer and so many of the other things that we do, that is, again, another thing that we rely on very heavily. Also, I can't speak highly enough about our City Attorney, Dean Frieders, and the value-added that he brings to our department as well. He's not your typical city attorney and as compared to some of the other places that I've worked. In addition to doing the standard ordinance and things that most of what we expect out of a city attorney, we really do utilize and rely on him as an extension of our planning functions. We count on his knowledge, historical knowledge in our department is pretty limited in timeframe, so he does help us a lot when we need to have historical information about projects. He also has a significant number of contacts within the community that we can use and reach out to, and that's a great deal for the community. The contract that we have with him is structured such that it's a flat fee, so whether we use him for the time that he's required to be here or all of the other times that we call him in the day or night, it really goes very far to providing additional services for our department. And it's because of these external assets that as a department, we aren't coming to the council with a request for new additional, new staff members this year. We believe and we support the public safety. Part of this budget request, and we know there's a lot of funding that's going to be necessary to get those new positions up and running. Yesterday, Chief Lowry hosted the meeting over at the Police Department and talked about a lot of the things that were going to be necessary moving forward to address the very real needs in our community. And we saw a lot of heads nodding. I mean, he was throwing out all of the initiatives that he feels are important in this community to go to that next step. We also saw a lot of heads nodding again and voices expressing support for some of the things that our department does, and that includes some of the increased code enforcement and economic development efforts. Specifically yesterday, because we were talking about public safety, the focus on those, I think on most of those people's mind, was being more aggressive on negligent property owners in that area and really trying to step up our code enforcement effort. So, as part of the budget process, I was tried, I was asked, tasked to try to do as much as we could with what we had, again, kind of realigning those resources, or if we were asking for something new to try and make sure that we were covering it, to make it as much as possible of a zero-sum game. So, I do have some staffing requests that were outlined in your memo that I want to talk about. Most notably, it involves increasing two of my current part-time positions to full-time positions, and I'll go through those one by one. I think all of you are aware, the community's probably aware, that we have a Community Development Block Grant entitlement. That funding comes from the federal government through HUD and generally is around $400,000 a year. That entitlement is unique to DeKalb. We are technically too small of a community by today's standard to qualify for that funding. So, if we were to lose that funding for any reason, if we weren't keeping up with their requirements or their guidelines, there's a very real possibility that we could lose that $400,000 in free money that our part-time, two-day-a-week person spends helping the neediest people within our community. I think it's fairly safe to say that in no case in DeKalb's history can I, could I find in any of the documents that I went through that that program has been administered by a part-time, 20-hour-a-week, two-day-a-week person. So, it is very, a pretty big, tall order for her to keep up with just the minor things that she needs to do to stay on top of doing those grants and providing that funding and meeting HUD requirements. In addition to that, she also performs additional tasks for the city doing our social service funding. So, that's above and beyond what HUD, what we pay her for out of HUD funds. We are very fortunate to have this entitlement, and every year, as I mentioned, HUD does seem to keep adding more restrictions and requirements and forcing us to change the way we look and handle that program. The other thing that has come up a couple of times, and again, we don't have the resources to give her, to allow her to make the changes that would be necessary, is that we really feel that there could be better uses of the funds that are coming to the city. Every four years, we're required to put together a program that explains to HUD how we're going to use those funds, and if, as long as we keep using the funds in that manner, it's pretty standard. You can kind of follow the protocol. Right now, we utilize a lot of our funding for water capital projects. Our water fund is pretty solid right now, so we've talked a little bit about are there other things that would meet HUD guidelines that we could redirect that funding to that we maybe don't have as much funding capability to utilize? Again, that's something that requires modifications to the plans and things moving forward. We're gearing up to do that in the next plan that's coming up, but again, it really is limiting when we only have somebody here 20 hours a week. One of the things, again, I'm going to hit on this a little harder because Gene's hit so hard on it, when we talk about the destabilization of the Annie Glidden North and really not just that area, we have real community needs all throughout DeKalb. The statistics are staggering. I didn't realize them until Gene presented them last night, that 30% of our community is at or below poverty level. And that's compared to the state and federal figures, which are in the low teens. So, we do have a large need in the community for people to have access to these resources, and I'm very concerned that we want to do whatever we can to make sure we continue to have access to this resource. I want to move on to our kind of downstairs. We have our upstairs and our downstairs at City Hall, and the downstairs folks are mostly dealing with our building permits, and we've spent a lot of time, I've spent a lot of time redirecting and realigning those resources. As many of you know, we contracted last year with a firm called HR Green to provide building plan and inspection services for the city, and the initial contract with them consisted of Don Plasse as a Chief Building Official providing a lot of technical assistance to us as we were putting together our new building code in cooperation with the Building Code Board of Appeals. And that code was adopted earlier this year, about the same time we had lost one of our planning positions, and I was really struggling to, you know, work upstairs and have the kind of with a technical team and promoting economic development and still providing whatever minimum support I could to those downstairs. So, we decided to reallocate that resource to a Chief Building Official that would be hired and serve that long-term. So, I gave up that technical position upstairs to move downstairs to provide that support to that group. We made that decision early. That position was just filled, just filled. Thaddeus Mack started with us this week on Monday. I know we've talked a lot, Gene talked a lot yesterday about staffing and how long it takes to get positions filled in the community. That's one example of, and an issue that we had, trying to compete with other positions that were coming onboard and just getting in queue to have that position filled. We were very happy with HR Green's services. That contract, in addition to Don Plasse as the Chief Building Official, includes a full-time, five-day-a-week plan review and building inspector position. We were fully prepared, and I think the budget I brought forward to our first budget meeting showed that number that we had in our contract coming forward for fiscal year 18. And I sat down, I was glad to be done with my budget, and Molly and Anne-Marie looked at me and said, "That's a really big number." And I'm like, "You're right, that is a really big number." So, we looked at that number and I said, "Well, we need to make sure," you know, because at this point, we're not including the Chief Building Official, we're just including that five-day-a-week person. It also includes the plumbing inspector, which generally we need about two days a week or on-call, you know, sometimes more, sometimes less, and it comes with their vehicles and other things that they have coming forward in their contract. So, we decided to take a look at what that might look like if we changed that five-day-a-week plan review inspector position to a full-time position. And when we compared the numbers that we were spending for that contract, and we did salary and benefits and equipment, which includes a car, I think that was included in the fleet information that our Public Works Director put together, we ended up saving about $44,000 if we go that route. Again, I'm not making this recommendation because I'm unhappy, they're providing an excellent service, but this is an opportunity for the community to consider a savings of about $44,000 to make that kind of a switch. I know there's other things involved with that, and Molly hopefully can talk to some of the retirement benefit issues that I know some of you may have questions about, but that is, that is something that we thought was important. Again, I'm into the zero-sum game. What can I, you know, how can I move things around to make us more efficient? So, I would like to use the savings that we're generating, if we go that route, to increase another position, one of my part-time positions in the department, from part-time to full-time. And that is the administrative assistant position that serves the technical positions upstairs. So, upstairs, myself and Dan Olson and Jason Mishnick are doing the technical planning and economic development function, which is really kind of driving, getting people in. So, it's that, you know, the initial contacts that Jason is working on and the other programs once we have them committed to the community, getting them through the process and to you for consideration and approval. That administrative assistant position, again, another part-time position is here, she's here every day, but she's here a limited numbers of hours. Her main role within the department, because of her knowledge and history, is serving as our FOIA response person. So, when we get a FOIA request that involves community development documents, she's the one who knows where they are for the planning and zoning cases. Building code stuff sometimes goes downstairs to Brenda, but there's a significant amount of time that Natalie needs to spend answering FOIA requests. She's also, up until recently, been a big part of our agendas for the Planning and Zoning Commission. She did a lot of work with our Building Code Board of Appeals, putting together the agendas, attending those meetings, doing those minutes. So, think about a 28-hour-a-week person that I have, going to a meeting at night, coming in, working on minutes, and then doing FOIA requests. You know, there's a lot of weeks during those times where there weren't a lot of extra hours that I could have her providing the support assistance to the three technical positions that we're hoping that that position would provide. So, it became really challenging. We've tried to reallocate and have some of the minutes being done by someone coming in from the outside. That's helped a little bit. But again, I think when you consider the amount of time that Jason and Dan and I spend on administrative tasks, it's a shame. You know, we have things that we could be doing to help the community further promote economic development, or, as is the case many times, when we're doing meetings all day and we haven't sat down at our desk until 5:00 at night, we're spending many, many days and many weekends just trying to get caught up on the administrative tasks. I know Gene talked a lot about the lack of attrition in his department, and that's very admirable. We obviously haven't had any attrition in the year that I've been here. I don't know that that's a statistic that's a great one to brag about at this point, but it is something I'm concerned about. When you push people for that long, for that many hours, I worry about that, and it's something I hope never happens in the department. I, you know, I don't want people to feel like they have to leave because there's never a break, and it really has been a long year of many long hours for the team of the three of us. So, again, I really feel it's important that we increase that part-time position to a full-time position. One of the other things that's important to note about the person in that position is the knowledge. And I know we talk a lot about part-time positions and what's appropriate for a part-time position. The person in that position, because she went to all those meetings and she knows the codes, she is able to answer a lot of the questions coming in on my phone, on Dan's phone, on Jason's phone. She's pretty knowledgeable on the code, and she can start to address those things and clear those out of our inbox and really provide assistance to people on what sometimes is a more timely fashion than we can when we're, you know, doing other things or stuck in meetings all day, which this time of year kind of turns out that way. If that position were to leave because they're looking for full-time employment or other reasons, again, we kind of get into that, okay, now we're into a hiring process, it's, you know, six to nine months. That takes a long time. Somebody's going to need to fill that slot while she's gone, and now I need to worry about, you know, the startup time that it's going to take to have somebody learn all of that stuff, where the files are. It's not something that you can replace with another temporary or part-time position or even that you can supplement. I know we've talked about, let's add more part-time people. And sometimes it just gets really hard to figure out where those people would sit, how you would split those responsibilities, you know, how does somebody pick up a complex task that one person is working on in the morning and, you know, pass that baton to the person in the afternoon? So, again, I think that position is very important, and because we can fund that position with some savings by making changes to the HR Green contract, we're hoping that the council will support that as well. I want to talk a little bit as well about our inspectors downstairs, and again, this is going to get to some of the staffing and filling position issues. Right now, we have the Fire Prevention Officer that's come over. He's the sworn officer out of the Fire Department. He's new into the department this year, and he's doing all of the scheduled inspections that are scheduled in the community throughout the year. Right now, he's tackling rooming houses. And again, because he's new and because he worked under Don Plasse's training under the new code, and we had direction from the council that we want to be more aggressive on property maintenance and code enforcement, we have sent him out with the task of, let's make sure we're looking at all this stuff. Let's, you know, whatever we did in the past, under whatever code, that's not the direction we have now. We want to move forward in a more proactive manner. And I got to tell you, you know, the learning curve is there, but he's had great mentorship from Don Plasse, and the resistance that we get is, well, we haven't had to do that before. You know, so, put yourself in his shoes when he's out there trying to work with landlords that have been doing certain things a certain way for many years. There's a little resistance that takes more time, and he's having a little bit more of a challenge. He's got a great attitude, he's working with people very nicely. He is the right person to do the job, but it's getting hard for him. It's getting frustrating, and he doesn't have all of the resources that he needs. We're going to be meeting with him shortly to see if there's any way that we can direct more resources toward him. In a perfect world, I would like to be able to say that one of the five budgeted, part-time building inspectors that we have in the division right now could provide assistance to him, but at no point during this entire year have we had more than three of those positions filled. And for quite a while, that whole division was staffed with only two part-time positions. And why was that? That's, you know, getting that staffing. Again, they're part-time positions, they're very hard to fill. I think our Human Resources Director yesterday talked about some of the challenges that we're facing with filling not only full-time positions, but especially part-time positions. Young people looking for a job in that role are looking for a full-time, so they're going to go wherever they can, or maybe they'll take this job for a little while and we'll spend a lot of resources training them, hiring them, going through all of that process and training them, only to have them leave once a full-time position becomes available. So, again, I talk about that because I do want to, you know, kind of tie this all together, and I know Gene talked about the importance of increasing that part-time HR person to a full-time. That's also important in my department because we've been affected by not only the hardship in trying to identify acceptable candidates, but also getting through that process and filling those roles so that we can do the task at hand. So, I want to see, I'm not going to ask for more inspectors at this point, because I want to see what it's like to get fully staffed. I, you know, I don't know what that looks like, and I want to give our new Chief Building Official an opportunity to get in and get situated and kind of make some of those decisions and see how that works. I think that summarizes all my staffing needs. Real quickly, I want to go through a couple of the other initiatives that are outlined in your report. We know that we're going to be working on the Annie Glidden North Revitalization Plan the rest of this year and probably through the first six months of the next calendar year or next fiscal year. We've said for a while that that type of planning process would also be beneficial for our economic development efforts if we did that same process citywide. So, that's the comprehensive plan. It was the last approved and adopted by the city in 2005. The standard timeframe for most comp plans is 10 years, so we've already exceeded that timeframe. By the time we would get one done, we'll probably be to 2020, so it will be about 15 years past the original approved date. We think this is important to start thinking about if we want to incorporate that into next year's fiscal plan. We would recommend budgeting $50,000 for that for the last half of next fiscal year to get that process started. That would allow the council and the community to decide, what do we want that process to look like? You know, are we going to have a lot of public input, a little? You know, are we going to have a lot of public input, a little public input? Because quite frankly, how much public input you plan for and how many meetings, you know, drives the cost that goes with that. Once we figure that out, we'll be able to come back to the council and let you know what amount of money we would need to budget for fiscal year 19. Also included in your budget is the completion of the Annie Glidden North project for next fiscal year, which is $39,920. I'm looking at the slide because I think I kind of went out of order. Did I cover all of those issues? I think I did. Oh, the TIF modifications, we're looking at phasing out some of the expenditures that we have been utilizing in the TIF for transfers to the general fund, and I think Molly has some additional conversations about that that we can get into. And the Finance Advisory Commission had some recommendations on that as well that I'm sure we'll be discussing. The other part of TIF, and I know we've had some general conversations, is about formulating a new TIF in the downtown area. We all know that our existing TIF districts are about to expire, one earlier than the other, and one of the things that we've learned through that analysis is that we have more identified projects than we're going to have funding for through the end of this TIF district. So if the council is interested in continuing that private investment and keeping that ball rolling, we would recommend that we do another new TIF in the downtown. So what we would do if we were to move forward is identify a smaller area, and that's kind of the commitment that we've made to the community is no more big TIFs. We're looking at something that's very targeted and very directed at things that we know can be successful. We have money in the budget for doing that TIF feasibility study. So part of the law in creating a TIF requires you to determine whether it qualifies as a TIF. So we expect to bring that proposal to the council in December, but again, that funding would happen in fiscal year 18. That would provide you with the information that you need to make a decision as to whether or not we should go down that path. And if we do go down that path, what that plan or what types of projects we would fund would look like. So I think I've covered everything I intended to cover. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Before we move on, Molly, that completes last night's agenda. Is that correct?
No, I have a few more slides.
You have two more slides?
I do.
Please, continue.
Okay. Because we kind of talked about it last night, but not, we didn't actually get to the slide where I could go over kind of what we looked at for funding for these key priorities. So we talked about the property tax levy, really in-depth yesterday, about the police and fire pensions, and that the property tax levy is built to fully fund police and fire pensions at the 7.0% investment return. So that would be the funding source for that change in the actuarial assumptions. The other part was the home real sales tax to increase that by 1%. We talked about this a little, but I want to make sure you guys saw kind of the breakdown of how that looks. So we've identified 45% for streets, 25% of the rate increase for fleet, and then 30% for operations, but it's really targeted at police and that public safety goal. So in FY '18, there's only three months of collections that we'll receive, so the full amount won't occur until FY '19. So that's one point here. Pardon me. And that the amount that we show for the additional police officers does include about $117,000 to meet the 25% fund balance reserve requirement you have for the general fund. So that is the cost for the officers and every other requirement you have with that. That's accounted for in that 587-250. And that would begin in FY '19. So we talked a lot about adding the police officers, but what we're really asking in FY '18 is for you to add the three officers in the staffing plan in '18, but that the funding would start in FY '19. Because one, as she said last night, there's about, well, in January, there'll be four vacant positions that, once we get through the cycle of hiring those, then we will begin to hire for the three additional officers. And by that point in time, the hiring really will occur in FY '19. So we're trying to put the funding request where the funding is needed. And then other funds. So the Water Operating Fund does meet the fund balance minimum of 25%. Right now, in the proposed budget, it's at 26.1%. The water capital is fully funded, and we are directing the portion of the increase to the capital fund that was decided a few years ago. And the fund balance there is $1.1 million in that fund. And the Airport Fund, Public Works, has started a new fuel pricing strategy, and it's been working very well. So the Airport Fund this year in the FY '18 budget is balanced and supports itself. There's no additional borrowing from the general fund in the FY '18 budget for the Airport Fund. And we also have, in the Water Fund, targeted for Grecreo in FY '18 to try to bring more sprinklers into that area by waiving tap-on fees for those owners. And actually, the other funds I didn't write on here is the TIF. We really would like to receive council direction on where you would like to go with the TIFs with the multi-phase out and, you know, the feasibility study going forward. And then I'm done, unless you guys have questions.
Okay, we'll open it up for questions. Any questions or comments? Alderman Fanouken.
You know, early on, when we were in the process, we had a, I think it was a call, we talked about at one point, a potential for a gas tax increase. And in the memo of earlier today and in another budget process, do I see where that was discussed at all? Is that even be a potential, if it was even discussed, with Finance Advisory?
The local motor fuel tax?
Yes.
Yes, it was discussed. So it was part of the five-year plan as one of the potential options for funding streets and fleet. And when we looked at it, we identified in the LRS plan, they missed a percentage of the local motor fuel tax when they were doing the total, what that would become. So it was about a percent higher than what was indicated in the plan. So we stepped back from the local motor fuel tax for now to kind of reevaluate what that would mean. So it was not considered for this budget at this point because we wanted to update the five-year plan with the correct rates.
All right. It's just that I know that any of the motor fuel tax that is collected has to go to transportation efforts, whether that be the airport or streets. And I would have thought that would have been a direct connect, that we could have basically identified a source that we know this is going to go to streets. I know you've tried to do that with the sales tax, but that isn't guaranteed to have to go there as it is with the motor fuel tax.
Correct. But when we, so how we have the split identified with sales tax, how I would envision that it would come into the budget is not 100% into the general fund and then transfers, right? It would come in, we'd receive it, and we would split it to the fund. So streets would receive their portion, fleet would receive their portion, and then general fund would receive the rest for the public safety. So we're trying to, we would try to keep it kind of isolated into those areas specifically when it would come in as revenue.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Norrico.
I want to make sure I heard correctly, that in the fiscal year '18 budget, there would not be a need to transfer funds to the airport, that the airport will be self-sustaining, so to speak?
Correct. For FY '18, the airport revenues would cover its expenses.
I never thought I would live to see this day, but my, congratulations to Public Works and the Airport Director. I truly was, you know, expecting that I would be long cold before that would happen. So at a time of, you know, difficult news, I'm glad that there is some positive news. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to add, great work by our Public Works Director, Tim Holdeman, and our Airport Manager, Tom Cleveland. They spent a lot of time looking at what's the best way to market that, and it is paying off. So it's helping, and you're right. It's not something that we predicted would happen in the short timeframe. So two other issues. So number one, in relation to the airport, one of the long-term issues, as you may recall, is because in previous years, when the airport was not balanced and when we were transferring money from the general fund, is ultimately the Airport Fund should repay the general fund that amount that has been loaned in the previous years. We're not at the point of it being healthy enough to repay the general fund, but that is part of the plan and that is still on our radar screen. Number two, I want to go back to Alderman Fanouken's question and just talking very quickly to Director Tockington. What we'll do is we'll add this to the agenda for the joint meeting next week and revisit that and be able to provide you with the data, so we're going to take a fresh look at it.
Thank you.
This is truly a fluid document, given the fact that since this budget proposal was presented, we've had a number of extenuating circumstances that have impacted on it, and not the least of which are two memos that we have received subsequent to receipt of the full budget packet. Today, we received the budget recommendations and revisions based primarily on those recommendations from the Finance Advisory Committee meetings. Is that correct? Is that a good assessment of what we've received?
It's kind of two things in the memo. One is what the Finance Advisory Committee's recommendations were.
Right.
And then the two revisions that occurred since then.
Right. Thus my argument that it's, or my assessment that it is a fluid document, if you will, and these are fluid meetings. Now, having said that, I'm going to, unless there's any further discussion on what we have thus far talked about, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Molly, and let's start the agenda for what you had planned to discuss for tonight's meeting.
So really, for tonight's meeting, if you want, we can go through all the FAC recommendations, or I'm going to ask you if you would like to digest that information and go over that at the joint meeting that we added last night.
As the Anne Marie wants to say something.
I'm going to recommend that at some point tonight, whether it's now or later, that Director Tockington walks you through the Finance Advisory Committee recommendations so you have that base knowledge, and then you have between now and next Thursday to analyze it, have whatever conversations. You may want to follow up individually with FAC members, but I think it would be beneficial for her to at least give you the background so you're not walking into these recommendations next Thursday. And then you can do your own analysis and research over the next, what, nine days?
What's the pleasure of the council?
Sounds good.
Move forward on the FAC recommendations and Molly's assessment of those, okay?
Sure.
You've got the green light.
Okay, good. So I did place a printout copy for everyone to follow along with. The first FAC meeting, so it goes through in chronological order of when we had the meetings. And so beginning on August 15th, and I will tell you, this is prior to my starting, I went back and looked at the minutes, and there was an overview of the comprehensive annual financial report, the bond rating summary report, and then the initial finance major revenue recommendations. This was more of an informational meeting, so there were no recommendations sought or received at that meeting. But then we went to September 21st. We went over the police and fire pension actuary reports, and then, of course, in-depth into that investment return study. We went over the five-year financial plan, and we discussed the water sales transfer to the water capital fund. Now, the recommendation, it wasn't a vote, but what we heard at that meeting was that the town of Normal needs to be added into comparisons that were probably very similar to the town of Normal, and that wasn't in the first draft of this financial plan. So we will add them for the next draft of five-year plan. With that, we've also talked about bringing that five-year plan back to FAC in June or July of next year so they have it earlier, and we can really use it to help guide us going forward with the budget for FY '19. This year, it was very close to when the budget was produced, so they, you didn't really have time to take in that information and apply it to this budget. So for October 5th, we then talked about the property tax levy, and again, we went over the recommendations of the five-year plan. What the Financial Advisory Committee recommended there was to levy the police and fire pension at the 7.0 investment return, which is what you see in your proposed document, and to fully fund that with the property tax levy. They also recommended support of closure of that Peace Road interchange agreement that we spoke about yesterday as well. That is also included in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
So on October 17th, we talked about the asset plan, really, the streets and fleet is part of that five-year plan, and the tax increment financing, really, the interfund transfers and whether or not we should consider a new TIF. So at that point, the Finance Advisory Committee did take a vote on, the motion was to support the multi-year phase out of the interfund transfers to the general fund, and the vote failed. The Financial Advisory Committee felt that keeping the funding in the general fund would keep support into the general fund, and that staff has in the budget document, though, the phase out of the transfers. So what that looks like is it's almost $600,000 over the five years. So for the FY '18 budget, the transfers from TIF I and TIF II remain the same as they were in FY '17. The phase out really doesn't begin until FY '19. In that year, even if we didn't do the phase out, TIF II funding goes away, and it's about a $119,000 decrease to the general fund just from TIF II. But we also included some phase out of TIF I, so it's about $232,000 in FY '19 that we would phase out of the transfer into the general fund. And then the following four years, we split the remainder, which is a little over, it's about 100, I think, $150,000 a year. So when we get to the end of the five years, the general fund is no longer receiving that additional support from the two TIFs, and that funding has been stayed in the TIF to support the activities of the Development Department, to try to use that funding for more development in those TIF areas while they're still here. And it phases it out by the end of TIF I. So we're kind of taking it slower. By doing it over five years, we're not taking an almost $600,000 reduction in one year. We're weaning ourselves off over that five-year plan.
In looking at that recommendation, does that align itself with what staff has gleaned as consensus from the twos-on, two-on-twos that we had for the TIF phase out? Do you understand my question? In other words, does this, does the recommendation fly in the face of what this council has been seemingly in support of, or does it support general consensus of where we're, what we want to do with the TIF phase out?
I would like to address that question. I think, based on the TIF phase out meeting that was held, I believe, September 21st of this year, as a special committee, the whole meeting with the council, a lot of the dialogue that we heard was either projects that could be done or different ways to spend the TIF money.
Right.
So although it was not specific direction from the council, one of the themes that we thought we heard from the council is, how can we free up additional dollars to provide that greater pool of money for the council to decide how you want to use it? Whether it's the development projects that you currently have been offering or agreeing to incentives, or some other project. So it was not specific direction, but really, we tried to look at what were some of the common themes that came out of that special committee, the whole meeting on TIF phase out. So this was one of them. So this is where, quite frankly, staff's recommendation differs from the FAC's recommendation.
Okay.
So this is a policy decision for the council, is, do you want the city to gradually wean its way off of TIF to be able to free up more money that you could use to capital, or are you content with the amount of money of TIF that is being transferred into the general fund to support operations?
So this is a true disagreement between perhaps staff recommendations and what the Finance Advisory Committee is recommending to council?
I wouldn't use the term disagreement. I would use the view that it's a policy, it's a total policy decision on your part. Our goal was to try to free up additional funds to be able to spend on capital or development projects, but if you're comfortable with the amount of money being transferred in, then you would want to go with the FAC recommendation. It really all depends on where you want to spend the TIF money. It really all depends on where you want to spend the TIF money. It's a total policy decision on your part.
It's not the first time I've used a bad word choice, Anne Marie, perhaps, but, you know, I just want to make sure in my own mind where we are, given the wording of it failed to recommend support.
Yeah.
And that sort of caught my attention, if you will.
I would just add, and I was, made the statement at the FAC meeting, is, I believe, over the course of, you know, since the time that the cities had TIFs in place, that we've been overly reliant on those funds, and it's a policy decision of the council. Do you wait until that last year, and then you fall off that cliff and see that difference between what is going to the general fund, or do you try to gradually step it down, so we're decreasing the amount going into operations, but you're increasing the amount available in TIF? It's a total policy decision on your part.
Okay, thank you. Alderman-Nariko, did you have a comment?
Yes, whether Chairman Peddell would be available on the 16th to address, you know, kind of their thinking, the committee's thinking behind their vote.
I reached out to him today and make sure he was available, and he will be.
I would suspect Mike will have views on a number of things, and will be in a position to answer some of our questions, as will the other members of the Finance Advisory Committee.
And so, then, the other discussion on the TIF was whether or not there was support for creation of a new TIF, and the FAC did recommend support for that. So, then, we moved on to October 30th and November 2nd, and basically, the discussion at both of those meetings was reviewing this budget and going over with their finance input on the budget. So, we have quite a few recommendations that came out of those two meetings. The first recommendation is, and this happened at the, so, we reviewed everything on the 30th, didn't make any recommendations on the 30th, and recommendations came on November 2nd. So, the first one's regarding the income tax, which is also part of this memo, and I'm going to divert from the FAC recommendation here for one minute to explain the income tax. So, when we put the budget together, and it was published, you know, released publicly in October, the IML projections and what we had used to project income tax were at a greater per capita income than what was released by IML for their November update. I was fortunate enough to, I had called them on the 31st, and they gave me an early look at it, but until that date, we didn't realize, or we didn't have the updated numbers, which reduced the per capita amount for income tax. And so, I did speak to the executive director of IML today, we've been playing phone tag since then, and he's actually, he was at Springfield today trying to figure out what's going on with income tax, because their initial projections were, we have greater wages, lower unemployment, and we're seeing, you know, that base should be resulting in higher income tax receipts, but once it goes to the state and then comes to municipalities, we've seen a 6% decrease in the per capita on individual income tax, and almost 32% decrease in corporate income tax, which is something that IML noted has never happened before. So, there's an anomaly, something is happening at the state, and IML is working to figure out where the discrepancy is between, you know, higher income and higher wages and lower results for the municipalities. So, we have, I outlined the reduction in what that revenue would be, and it affects the current year that we're in, and it also affects the FY '18 numbers. So, that ties right back, and we updated FAC on that November 2nd meeting of that information as well. So, they recommended having that income tax revenue from the state be adjusted to those lower amounts that IML came out with for their November release. The next one is they strongly, they're strongly committed to current and future budgets that adhere to the minimum 25 general fund balance for the city's adopted fund balance policy, and they endorse that fund balances above the minimum are preferred. They further recommended continued support of the present practice with respect for the water system charges in terms of segregating the rate increase portion of that to the capital purposes, and that we provide updates to City Council and FAC on that. The recommended revenues, or they recommend that revenues collected for capital purposes stay segregated for capital matters and not diverted to operations. They recommended no new debt being incurred by the city or on the city's behalf until a financially balanced five-year financial plan iteration is completed. And all of those motions we just talked about, they did as an omnibus vote, and they supported those. There was a recommendation to support the 1% home real sales tax, as staff recommended, and FAC voted against that. Now, later in the meeting, they did come back to the 1% home real sales tax, and so, there's a little bit, it's a little bit different than staff, so what they voted was that 3/4 of the percent of the home real sales tax will be used for streets and fleet with the six-year sunset. And then, they voted to increase home real sales tax a quarter percent to be used solely for the three additional police officers, as outlined in that previous slide that I showed, and then, anything remaining in that quarter set would be then moved to capital. They also then discussed TIF funding, and they recommended the spending from the TIF funds on the roads be increased from the $500,000 that staff has in the budget to $1 million between the two TIFs, with the difference being made up by reducing other capital spent within those TIFs. So, I'm going to explain this one a little. So, in past years, TIF funding did provide $1 million in road support. This year, Director Holderman looked at the motor fuel tax fund and saw that there were some available balances that we could use, so we've redirected $1 million of the motor fuel tax into those projects by offsetting, and we reduced the TIF amount to $500,000 between the two TIFs. So, we are still receiving $1 million funding, we just moved it to the motor fuel tax fund instead of into the TIFs.
And if I could just jump in here, the reasoning behind that is, number one, we increased the amount that was going towards streets, and number two, we decreased the amount that was going from TIF funds to streets, which, once again, was trying to keep with the same methodology of we were, it's the staff level, based upon what we thought is one of the themes that we heard at the September 21st committee of the whole meeting, is we were trying to free up additional funds in TIF, based on whatever policy direction you and the council want to go with that amount, but to give you more opportunity for additional funds, TIF funds.
And so, then, the last recommendation of the FAC was that $1.5 million, there should be $1.5 million in budget balancing measures in the FY '18 budget. Again, this is not reflected in the budget that you see. There was a lot of discussion during this point about the amount, if it should have been $1.5 million, $1 million, or $900,000. The original motion was $1.5 million, and that's what the FAC ended up voting on, but there was significant discussion on what amount that recommendation should be, but ultimately, they ended supporting the original motion.
What's, what do you mean by budget balancing?
Well, so, that was the second point of discussion. So, some felt that it should be expenditure reductions, and then, there was discussion on whether budget balancing means expenditure reduction or other revenue sources. So, again, that was another, this motion, they had a lengthy discussion on what the amount should be and what the terminology should be. And so, I use the term budget balancing in meaning that it could be expenditure reductions, revenue increases, or a combination of both, but at some point, you're balancing the budget through one of those methods.
Okay.
Through what?
One of those methods.
So, basically, we either, for simplicity, the recommendation is, we either increase revenue 1.5 million, or we decrease expenditures 1.5 million, or some combination thereof.
That's how I understood it.
For the general fund.
Mm-hmm. Correct. And this was a result of the discussion in regards to the revised income tax revenues that we're receiving, the IML projections. So, when you look at where you're going to end fiscal year '17 with the general fund, as far as general fund balance, and then, basically, the fiscal year '18 budget. So, they were concerned with that amount and the differing revenue projections, so you really have three options, is what they're saying, a combination. You look at revenues, you look at expenditures, or you look at a combination of those two.
And was that prior to the sales tax increase recommendation, or after?
Before. So, I put the recommendations in order as they discussed it on the sheet of paper. So, they talked about that first, and then went into discussions about the home real sales tax recommendations that they had.
Okay. Comfortable with that, Mike?
Well, it explains budget bal, what was meant by it.
Yes, Alderman-Nariko.
Now, I've gotten confused. So, potentially, if their recommendation for increasing the home real sales tax, oh, I was going to say by 0.75%, but they're saying all of that should go to streets and fleet, but would that count towards the 1.5 million, or is it 1.5 million, and then this other, additional revenue is already delegated?
They didn't, the committee didn't actually talk about the three recommendations together, or how they would work together?
Oh, okay.
So, I'm not entirely sure if they felt that by raising the home real sales tax, then you've filled that budget balancing measures they wanted or not.
We're going to have the opportunity next Thursday night to ask that, aren't we not?
Correct. Thank you. And so, then, that's really all the recommendations of FAC. The other part of this memo talks about the revisions that happened after the budget document was put together, and I wanted to make sure that we were, you guys were all updated. We've kind of talked about them here and there, but we haven't talked about them kind of in order. So, the budget book was released on the 25th of October. Then, you went into council meeting on October 30th to purchase the Edgbrook property. And in the motion to purchase that, there was the condition that the 25% general fund balance, it'd be at or above that amount for FY '17, FY '18. So, with the addition of that purchase, from the proposed budget to adding that purchase, you are above that target at 25.6% for the FY '18 budget, and for the FY '17, it was state, it went to 27.7%. Now, after that decision occurred, as I said, the income tax projections came out for the November review of IML. So, if you factor in the adjustments for the income tax for FY '17 and '18, whoops, did I get to my page? That the FY '17 general fund reserve balance goes down to 27%, and the FY '18 balance is at 23.5% in the reserve. And then, now, we're here today.
And Mayor, if I could add one correction, I've been stating that the date of the special committee of the whole meeting was September 21st. I was incorrect, it was September 19th, just for the record.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? Alderman-Jacobson?
Just a quick comment. I do vaguely remember having the discussion a year ago. Where one of the members of the Finance Advisory Committee was pretty forcefully and strongly recommending, we downward trended and accounted for those revenues in sales tax, and I'm pretty sure we decided not to do so, at least to the limit they decided, or that he recommended that the FAC.
No, the council followed that direction.
We did go down the full route.
That was the $100,000 reduction that the council adopted with the motion, I believe, in the second reading of the ordinance.
And that wasn't enough to cover the difference in terms of the realistic, what we're expecting, projection, sales tax, state sales tax?
No, it was. I mean, I think if we go back, and I'll defer to Director Tockington, you're talking about sales taxes. That recommendation, I believe, was $100,000 less on sales taxes, and I'm going to defer to you, but I think the projections came in higher than what we budgeted for.
Right. Sales taxes, you're still seeing growth in both state sales tax and the home real sales tax, but this is on income tax, which is a state-shared revenue.
So, is this figure of the reduction from 9.7 million to 9.1 million, which is the change from 27% to 23.5%? Does that represent, is that part of how they got to the figure of 1.5 million, has to be?
Not totally on the 1.5 million. So, what, it was kind of a building block to get to the 1.5. So, part of it was the, just under $800,000 for the income tax change if you take the two years together. Then, it was, if we looked at the five-year plan, $72,000 in, I'd have to look, I forget what column it was, but it was $70,000 for that. And then, it was to build essentially stabilization for the general fund. So, if you cut now, then we can, by year five, be at zero, well, we wouldn't be negative in our fund balance.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so.
So, it was kind of a building block.
There isn't necessarily a one-to-one correlation, it's really a combination.
Right. There are multiple factors that went to take it to the 1.5 million.
Okay, thank you.
You want to continue then, Molly, or are you finished with this document?
Well, let me.
No, that was everything.
Ask a question, if I may.
Yes, I didn't see your.
No, no, no. If I'm reading this correctly, so, we're looking at FY '18 of being a $9.1 million general fund reserve balance.
Right.
I think is the number I'm seeing you have here.
Mm-hmm.
And based on the proposed budget, we should be at about 9.66 million. So, we're really looking at about $550,000 difference in the general fund that we would have to make up somehow in order to stay at that 25%.
Correct. So, you have, I think you have more than one choice. You could reduce the budget to get to the 25%, which, you're right, it's a little over $550,000, or you could look at your one-time needs and use one-time fund balance, and we've discussed some of those one-time needs. You have, you know, $300,000 for the digital radios, you have funding for the comm plan. So, you have multiple things that are one-time in nature, that one-time fund balance would be an acceptable source to fund those. I wouldn't recommend it for, you know, hiring three additional police officers, because it's a recurring expense, but you do have enough one-time expenditures in the budget that are above that target of $550,000 that you would need. There's also the, you know, as things develop, right, we're fluid, like I said, with the digital radios, there's still potential for FIRE to receive a grant for the $200,000 on those as well. So, soon, if we ever get that, if we get that grant, and as soon as we get it, we will update you.
Thank you.
And can I go back? I want to address Alderman-Jacobson's question, and I'm looking at the draft budget, so anybody at home or here in the council that wants to look at it, it's page 82 of the budget, the general fund revenue summary. So, when I compare the fiscal year '17 budget to the estimate, and I'm trying to remember, and maybe someone else can remind me, I can't remember last year if it was the sales tax, the city sales tax, municipal sales tax, or the sales tax or the municipal sales tax. If it was the sales tax slash city, the budget was $6,512,000, and the estimate of where we're going to end the year was $6,642,707. And the estimate of where we're going to end the year was $6,642,770. So, we're ending the fiscal year $100,000 more than what we budgeted for in that line item. When it comes to MRO-T, it's right about the same. So, once again, I'll double check as to which sales tax that was, but one, we're heading, we're ending $100,000 more than we budgeted.
It might be appropriate for the council, in my opinion, to preliminarily make a reaction to the Finance Advisory Committee's recommendations prior to our meeting with them next week. I think maybe we, if the council indulges me, perhaps now would be a good time to hear the two people who would like to speak to us. Does that sound okay? Because it may be germane to what we've heard thus far tonight, what we've talked about last night, or what we might talk about next Thursday night. Who knows? Melissa Burlingame, if you'd come up, Melissa, to the podium here. I think the mic is working over there. How you doing?
Good. How are you? Hello. Do I have to, I have to get real close? Okay. Melissa Burlingame, I'm a resident here in DeKalb. Do you need an address or any of that stuff?
Second ward.
Second ward. Bill is my alderperson. Strange, I was also speaking at the budget meetings for the county. So, there's lots of budget stuff going on right now. Here to support budgeting for safety and development in our city, thinking about how we can support our citizens, not just those of us who are well-off, but those of us who aren't, and the support we need, and how we can continue to move forward in the future. Development-wise, we really need to be thinking towards the future. And decisions we make now are setting the groundwork for how we will prosper, you know, like five, 10 years from now. I was thinking about economic development, and I'm like, just a special plug for, could we do some infill development, please? That would be great. So, I'm tired of looking at empty storefronts and new construct, while new construction is taking place. But that takes investment in our current infrastructure. Economic development takes investment to return an investment to us. So, I do definitely support moving TIF funds to support development, as opposed to going towards the general revenue. I'm not generally a person who supports moving funds from allocated funds to a general fund. When I was at the county, they were moving funds from the solid waste host fund to support general activities, as opposed to the dedicated activity of recycling and recycling education and that type of stuff. So, poor budget practice, in my opinion. I do appreciate the TIF phase-out strategy so that the city is not doing what the county is doing this year in trying to plan for, like, they're trying to fill a big budget hole because the airline left the county, and now they've got, you know, big, huge gap that they're trying to fill. So, this phase-out is a really good idea, so that our city isn't faced with that in five, six years, when the TIFs are gone. So, there's that. And then just in terms of the Annie Glidden corridor improvements, I really think that we need to support that community identity, developing neighborhood structure there, the citizens there. You know, they live in a food desert. They don't have much support. You know, it's hard to feel like it's part of the community when you're out there and there's not a whole lot to do over there. You have to travel a bit in order to get, in order to have a sense of community there. So, that's essentially what I wanted to add. I didn't get to come and support the STEAM project, which, you know, like, would have been great too. So, but yeah, I like what, the direction that the budget was proposed in, and seeing how to, like, keep our current level of services, as opposed to cutting what we, you know, like, what we could be providing.
Melissa, thank you. We appreciate your comments and all those that we continue to hear from our citizenry.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dwayne Brown, fourth ward.
You said it for him, Mayor Dwayne Brown, fourth ward. I don't know if it's a time change or what, but seems like the days are longer. It's like I've got jet lag or something. I don't know. Maybe it's just me. Something interesting today, 35% of the people surveyed will do their shopping on Black Friday. This is down from 59%. I think this is the Amazon effect we're seeing here. Since their proposed hiring three police officers and additional people for the community development, I thought this was appropriate here. Earlier this year, Mayor Smith was on the Inconvenient Truth Show, talking to the mayor of Sandy Springs, Georgia, Mayor Rusty Paul. Sandy Springs, Georgia, is located in northern Fulton County, north of Atlanta. It has a population of about 105,000 and was incorporated in 2005. Seven people on the city staff, including the city manager, are on the public payroll. But the others are contracted employees. The city does have a conventional police force and fire department, in part because the insurance premiums for a private company providing those services would be prohibitively high, but the 9/11 dispatch center is operated by a private company. Cities have debated for years with privatization, but few have taken the idea as far as Sandy Springs. Since the day it was incorporated, it has handed off to private enterprise just about every service that can be evaluated through metrics and linked into contract. The city's court is handled by a private company. The judge is paid $100 per hour. Sandy Springs doesn't have a fleet of vehicles for road repair. It does not have long-term debt. It has no pension obligations. Does Sandy Springs approach, does the Sandy Springs approach work? It does for Sandy Springs, says manager John McDowell, who points out only to the city's healthy balance sheet, but also to the high marks from residents on surveys about the quality of government services and the quality of life in Sandy Springs. Sandy Springs can't claim to be the most outsourced city in the United States. That distinction probably belongs to Maywood, California, eight miles southeast of Los Angeles, which in 2010 fired all but one employer, its city manager. Maywood is now operated from top to bottom through contracts. The police officers are members of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, paid a total of $3.5 million to patrol the streets. Maywood was pushed to this extreme measure after it flirted with bankruptcy and lost insurance coverage for its public workforce. Sandy Springs went the public-private partnership by choice. Maywood was forced to do so. This is an example, I think, of how contracting saves. Of course, this city was not, wasn't incorporated until 2005. So, they did a lot of pre-planning. The mayor knows more about it than I did. He talked to the mayor of Sandy Springs. But this just shows some of the example of how contracts and privatization can save money, especially on pensions. I mean, look at our pensions, you know, especially the fire pensions. That's the danger zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Assuming there are no other folks in our audience who would like to address us, let's have a discussion, if we may, Molly, unless you're having something to add, on any reactions at this point for the Finance Advisory Committee recommendations. If not, we will adjourn till our next meeting. Any thoughts? Alderman Jacobson?
I mean, I guess, much as last year, a little upset we're not going through at least the portions of the budget by department, if not line by line, through what we're actually spending. I don't believe we're given an accurate depiction of exactly where that money's going to. I know that is exactly how it was presented my first three years on the council, that we went through department by department or account by account, and at least had a discussion of what the money was being spent on and what we were getting for that money. I don't think it's appropriate merely to come up with a transmittal letter and say, well, this is what we need this year, and everything else is on you to figure out. I don't think that's an appropriate way to do it. So, I would state that concern at least preliminarily.
Mayor, can I comment? So, I've heard about how it was done prior to my arrival. I can tell you this, I had the pleasure and the privilege of, this is the sixth municipality that I've served in my career. All but one council manager form of government. In council manager form of government, the process is what we follow. It's a responsibility of staff, and it's my responsibility as city manager, to prepare a budget and present it to you and the mayor and the council as the elected officials. That detailed examination you're talking about, Alderman Jacobson, is what I do and what we do with the finance director when we meet with each department. So, the city may have done that previously, but that really is the role of staff. Our goal is to address, what are your policy issues? You tell us where you want the community to go, whether it's the parameters on spending, whether it's staffing, and then it's our responsibility to put that in action. If you want more detail, I'll be glad to have any of the department heads talk about what's in the budget. I'll tell you some of the themes. Last year, we cut so severely that it was very hard for some of the departments to operate. In particular, police and fire, being the two largest, police-fire and public works, had the biggest impact. You may recall last year, one of the recommendations that came out of the Human Relations Commission was to do inclusiveness training. And we cut that. We actually split it in two and had budgeted the training only for non-sworn, non-barney unit employees. So, basically, city hall employees and other management staff through the other departments, police-fire and public works. We have budgeted this year, so you'll see an increase, let's say, in the training amounts, in particular for police and fire, because one of the things you need to know is when we do training in the police and fire departments, we have to bring those employees back on overtime in order to provide that training. And that was the biggest prohibition or the biggest obstacle for us to be able to budget for that last year. It was not the cost of the training itself, it's the actual amount of time to pull those officers, bring them in on overtime, bring the firefighters in on overtime to do that. You know, I'll defer to Director Tockington, but in fact, I had asked earlier, like, is there anything really else besides what we've identified? My direction to department heads as we put together this budget was status quo or look at reduce if you can. And as Director Charlton talked about earlier, I also challenge them, if you're looking to add something, what are you taking away to be able to try to balance it and be able to offer that to the council? So, I know this is where fundamentally have different viewpoints as what the role should be, but it is not just what, you know, this is what I've seen in a half a dozen communities in my career. This is what standard in northern Illinois, when you put together the municipal budget, is you set the parameters, you set the policy, we take that as staff and put together the operational budget that tries to meet your demands. I know last night you had said, in regards to not having the opportunity to be able to provide input. I would differ, beg to differ, because part of what we try to do is we take what we believe is previous direction given to us in the 2025 strategic plan, and take what are some of those priorities, which is why I mentioned yesterday, one of the things that the mayor and I are working on to bring to you is to have a half-a-day planning session where you identify your priorities. Identify your priorities in the next 18 months, identify your priorities in the next three and a half years. But we've taken that information from the strategic plan, and then we try to incorporate that into the budget. The other thing that we tried to do, when you look at the budget process, is specifically, we tried to use the special committee of the whole meetings for the asset management plan, as well as the TIF phase-out. We timed those to be prior to the budget because it was our goal to take that direction and that feedback from all of you and incorporate that in the budget. And Mayor, what I would say to you is if there's one area in particular I would, I strongly recommend that you take a look at, are the TIF funds. And we want to make sure, with all the discussion we've had on TIF, that we're addressing your needs and the direction of where you want to go. You always have the possibility, as you move through the year, if you need to modify TIF. But that's the area that we feel like we incorporated some of the items, but a lot of the major policy decisions, you all have to decide. And whether, you know, we have another TIF or another council meeting as it moves into 2018. But that is not only my professional opinion and recommendation, that's what I've been taught since day one, when I entered the MPA program at Northern Illinois University, and that's what's practiced by professionally-run and managed municipalities in northern Illinois.
Let me tell you something. I've been in this building virtually every day since I assumed office on the 8th of May, six months tomorrow. And Jo Ellen, what am I better at than anything?
Asking questions.
Asking questions. I ask questions each and every day of each and every staff member that I meet. Well, perhaps not each and everyone, but quite a few. And when I got this budget, my first reaction was, oh, my God. I've tried to go through this over the last couple of weekends at home. And I appreciate, and I'm responding you now, Dave, I appreciate the transmittal letters, I appreciate the executive summaries, and I really appreciate the fact that we have pretty much talked in detail about safety and development. And those are two of the areas that we've talked about. Now, as you noted, we probably have had more lengthy committees of the whole meetings in the last six months than we may have had in the past. Is it self-serving for me? Absolutely. Because I've been able to ascertain through questions and discussion about things as diverse as TIF and STEAM and God knows what else. So, what I'd like to do is to take Dave's question or comments, which I respect, Dave. Dave and I have had a few wars, but we agree, I think, on more than what we disagree on. And what I'd like this council to either tell me tonight as your mayor, or at the very least next week, as we move forward in this budget process, of whether or not we need to dig into this more deeply, as suggested by Alderman Jacobson.
Mayor, can I build on?
And there is a question in there some points, you know, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I would suggest, since this is Tuesday, November 7th, the next meeting is going to be Thursday, November 16th. As you, as elected officials, as the mayor and the council, as you've looked through this budget, if you have particular questions, email us. Please give us that information. In particular, it would be, it would be very helpful to have them by the end of the week because then we can put together that information. If we have enough, if we have that soon enough, we can present that and send out a memo as part of the agenda and provide that to you in advance. If we don't get it in advance, then we're going to be walking into the meeting and trying to answer the questions on the spot. And especially if there are more specific detail, if you have a question of what's in this line item, send us that email, and we can collectively address those questions proactively prior to the next meeting.
Any further comments? Alderman Jacobson?
I just knew you'd have a report, David. I mean, I would share some of the comments today from our task force meeting. I'm tired of spending nights here watching PowerPoint presentations. I have a computer, I have a phone, I have time on my couch at night to sit and go through slides. And I do my homework. I think most, if not all of us, do at this point. I'm tired of coming into rooms, hearing the impassioned pleas. That's not what I'm here to do. My time is valuable to me. And to sit here and have discussions of the same thing we were presented on paper, I could read that at home. To sit and go through this budget and have an understanding of what we're spending on, how the changes affect our budget. And there's significant changes every year where things are pulled out and moved to different departments and gone to different things. We didn't set priority this year. We already decided that. We already decided that and had that discussion yesterday. So not only were we not involved in the priority setting, now we're not involved in the actual creation of the document, and now we're saying professionally that we're not involved in understanding how any of the money is spent. I mean, there are few words I could use on the mic that would describe what I feel about that comment. I have been professionally involved in multiple multimillion dollar national organizations as a volunteer. I have been involved with other organizations to the business sense of being involved professionally. And if any one of those companies came to me and said professionally, don't worry about the budget, we'll take care of it for you, I'd fire them immediately. I would ensure they were fired immediately because that's not acceptable. To not have any understanding whatsoever, to not have any part of the process, to not have any part of what's going on and just say, well, you know, we're going to use some buzzwords and some impassioned pleas to get this budget passed is wholly inappropriate.
So what I-
And I mean, I don't understand on the other way to say that.
We have had the police departments and the community development departments articulate their main issues, if you want, and if it pleases the mayor and the council, at the next meeting, we'll have all the department heads go in and highlight if there's any particular changes that you want. We will gladly do that. We'll go to that depth if you want that.
Again, in having the discussion that the goal this year was status quo plus, certainly that's the document received that we got was status quo plus expenses. I mean, the reality that we're going to be able to continue to increase taxes is zero, is zero possibility. So to look at this five-year plan and understand it and realize that already this year we're cutting into fund balance when we said that wasn't going to be something we're going to do, when realize already this year we're going to be looking at significant tax increases both to our sales tax and property taxes, and that doesn't even get our head above water. To realize, looking at that document, that we're projecting five to seven percent increases in sales tax every year and seeing our fund balance go down, this isn't a sustainable budget. I mean, I don't think anyone can at all claim that this is sustainable or balanced. And looking at things like even we were presented tonight, that the airport is balanced. It's not, Kate. I'm sorry, it's not. We're taking money now from MFT that we never did, that was supposed to go to the police department, that through the lockbox amendment is now required to go to the airport and adding $300,000 into that budget, that's not general fund support, that's general fund support. It's moving the money from one shell to another. So we're still at a several hundred thousand dollar deficit at the airport. So to understand those things so that we can make good decisions, and at the same time when those questions come up, rather than explain them, it's, oh, we've done a wonderful job and we balance it. We have not. That's not reality. It's a shell game that keeps getting played every year and moving the money from different accounts to different areas, to different organizations, and the game is just about up, guys. Look at what RFAC is showing us. Look at what our five-year future forecast is showing us. The game is up. We're out of money. We can't cover our basic operations this year without significantly increasing, not just this year, every year into the future, because there is no check and balance on the continual increase in the expenses that are going on in the city. So to have an understanding of what's being spent, I understand it, I've done this now six years. I had the benefit of going through it line by line and having each category explained to me each year. I've had that experience at the city to have the understanding of a budget, to somewhat understand what's going on. But with all the changes are being made, with all the different numbers jumping up and then down, and we don't know where that money's going to, to say, yes, that is a priority. Yes, training and development, we need to have this specific training, we need to have these specific focuses, we need to do these things. At a multi-hundreds of thousands of dollar level, we're not engaged in those decisions because we don't know how the money's being spent. And to even start to have a discussion about how we need to roll back some expenses, to have the discussion, how do we make sure that we are efficient and correctly ensuring the public's money is being spent? You need to have an intimate understanding of where that money's going to before we have that discussion.
Mayor.
Alderman Verbic.
Well, I mean, the reality is our fund balance is fiction. That money is owed to others. To Alderman Jacobson's comment, it is a sort of shell game. And the reality is, is that I can absolutely, and others that have contacted me, get behind shifting priorities to public safety and shifting priorities to code enforcement, absolutely. But where does it come from? And so I'm a little different than Alderman Jacobson in that I'm not as interested in line-by-line evaluations. I'm not interested in each department head coming in and doing a presentation. But what I am interested in are structural challenges to our budget. And when we just look at one item, and Moody's has told us time and time again where our challenges lie, and we had an EPI report that told us that our operations were not sustainable, to simply look at regular wages, and those by themselves are outpacing our growth in revenue. So I believe that we have policy discussion ahead of us to decide, shall we, for example, cap regular wage increase at 2.5% per year, much like we follow with collective bargaining agreements, those kinds of things. And I think it would be only then that we could get our hands around some of the things that Alderman Jacobson refers to and truly setting priorities. But if we continue to let regular wages on their own outpace growth in revenue, we will have tax increases on a regular basis.
Alderman Noriko.
I support Alderman Verbic's statement that we need to take a look at the policy issues, that we are here to really set that level of direction. I know that I'm not competent to really make recommendations or decisions about efficient operations in finance or the police department or public works. I think it's our role to maintain oversight, to carefully review the documents, and I think we got this document in adequate time, the budget document in adequate time to review. The fact that there have been changes in the universe, you know, the projection in terms of income tax, the necessary from our perspective purchase of the property on Edgebrook, all of that changed the figures. It is a somewhat fluid situation, but I think that we have direction from the Finance Advisory Committee. You know, that's one more level of oversight, and we carefully take a look at, does it make sense that we direct staff to take a look at, or we take a look at, you know, additional, you know, decreases in the budget? But I'm, I do not think that it is our role to go line by line by line. When I first, when I first came on the council, I tried doing that, and first of all, I wasn't very well-versed at that point, but it was a nightmare. And I pretty quickly realized there were some, there were many areas that I truly did not have the expertise to really make any kind of, you know, assessment. And then, you know, I shouldn't be expected to know about, you know, the price of rock salt or ice salt or whatever it's called and, you know, airplane fuel and so forth. But that, again, you know, we can set, you know, directions and priorities.
Alderman Verbic.
If, for example, over the next four years, regular wages will grow 13%. Well, if we would set that to, for example, 10%, what would that look like to us? Could that be a first step to further sustainability?
Absolutely. You know, I want to respond, well, I want to respond. I agree, Dave, that we need to look at this globally and we have to take a look at each and every line, if those lines are germane to what it is that we're trying to achieve, whether that be revenue or expenses. A budget is a one-year document. A budget is a budget. It is a plan, a plan that can be modified, modified throughout a given year. So I looked at this task as doing the best we can as a council at taking a look at a proposed 2018 budget, listening to our citizenry, listening to our Finance Advisory Committee, which, let's face it, is staffed with some pretty good people who know their numbers pretty well. But in your, to your point, Dave, when I look, and I look at our fund balance, and when I look at that fund balance decreasing dramatically, that over the next five years, if ever, if these numbers fall into place, we're at, what, $3 million fund balance in three or four years? FY '22, a fund balance?
It's below.
Of $3,301,000. Again, that's, but those are budgeted numbers, but that's what bothers me. So if we can do anything in FY 2018 that makes sense, then we ought to do it. But to suggest that by doing something in 2018, which is dramatically going to go over to 2022, to me, as a fairly well-versed in business, would you agree?
I would agree.
Yeah, when we work together. But I'm not a finance person, I'm not an accountant, but at least I can look at numbers. So I guess to Alderman Jacobson's point, I look at the numbers, I look at them very seriously. I think we can do some things in FY 2018, and we should do them, we should do them. But we need to also realize that we may be faced with not being able to do everything this year. But we need to start tackling the problem. And you're on it, you're on it. So that's what we're here for. I don't want to lollygag around any more than anybody suggests that we might be doing.
Mayor, can I add something?
Please do.
So in listening and being the new staff person, right, I come from a very different budgeting experience in different communities, right? I worked in the city of Naperville, the village of Glenview, and the city of Champaign. They're very different in how they run their operations. And so then when I came in here and looked at the budget, which was very nice of the city manager to wait so I could sit in on those directors' reviews of their budgets, I didn't come in here with any history of what was going on. I came in here, and quite frankly, Chief can tell you, I irritated him the minute he sat down for his budget review. So I didn't come in here looking to make friends in our budget review. I came in here to ask some of the very same questions you guys have, right? Why is your overtime high? Do you have significant duty injury? What's that due to? But what it really boils down to, and I think I'm a little conflicted when I hear from Alderman Jacobson, because sometimes I hear about priority-based budgeting, which talks about the services versus line item, okay? When you start looking line item to line item, you're missing the picture of what that service is. So when you say, I want to cap salaries at two and a half percent, we're missing the picture of what services those people provide. And what we should really be focusing our conversation on, and where I want to get with council when we do this for the FY '19 budget, is what are those services that you see the city being the building blocks, right? And we've talked about leaf collection. Is that a service you're willing to say the city shouldn't be doing anymore because we want to focus on stormwater?
You're talking about, what was that?
Like, leaf collection.
Or leaf collection.
So you talked about that yesterday.
Yeah.
We had a good discussion. So is leaf collection where you want to put your funding, right? Or do you want to redirect that funding to stormwater maintenance? Or do you want to redirect it to pothole filling? But the discussion is what services do you think the city should be providing and what level do you want that service to be, right? So you can be okay with leaf collection being, you know, a volume pickup in the bag, or do you want it on the curb? It's those decisions that you guys need to set as we talk about the budget going forward is what services do you want and what level? And we'll come back to you and say, well, just like we did, if we want to increase police boots on the ground and the response times to the crime that we're seeing in the city right now, what it's going to cost is this multi-year staffing plan, right? But the real discussion isn't about adding seven people. The real discussion is the points that Chief made, that they can get to non-emergency calls in 12 minutes versus 17 minutes, which is a big difference to the person who's standing there when it's their house that's been burglarized.
Actually, it was 19 minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Right.
I thought I had it right.
Yeah, no, that's-
But, you know, it's those points that, as we start to talk about the FY '19 budget, you're not for the FY '18 budget. We're at a point of, to begin those discussions, it's going to take longer than you have to legally adopt this budget, because if you don't adopt the budget by January 1st, then we cease operations, right? There is a legal commitment you have to fulfill, and we have a very short amount of time. And so what this budget focuses on are the big changes we made in the budget. And the big changes all revolved around safety and development, and we've highlighted that through the transmittal letter. We brought you additional memos on those specifically to bring out those points, to explain those services for you. If we want to go line by line, we can, but I think you'll miss the big picture when you're looking at training like City Manager said. Well, why did this overtime go up for this training? Well, you're missing the bigger picture of, we need that training to do X, Y, and Z because you just looked at one line item. I think we really need to focus as a council, and it comes back to Alderman Noriko's point of, what are the policies you want to set for those services and how do you want those services delivered? And that will tell you kind of where your line items come into play. And I, personally, because I haven't been here as long, respect the opinions that you have and the ideas that you have, but I will say, when I looked at this budget, even before I started, because City Manager had us do an exercise and we had to come in and do a presentation on the interview, and I had to review your TIF funding and I had to look at this budget, you have a slim budget. The city of Champaign doesn't even provide water or refuse collection, and they have about 10 more people in their finance department. I mean, we're working on very small departments here to try to provide those services that you're requesting, and when I looked at things, I even asked questions, oh, well, do we do this or do that? I was having a hard time finding places where we haven't maximized our services through my questions of a new person coming into this organization. Now, I know you weren't there in those conversations to hear them, and I'm hoping that you trust that I did come in and ask those questions, and I tend to ask those same questions next year, even though I'll be here a year longer. But that's the same, that's the role of the finance director and the city manager, is to really scrutinize what those departments are providing and bring you what those services that the city will have and what the services that you want the city to have. And so by shifting that five-year financial plan review to June and July, we can see where we're going to be in that five-year mark. Any decisions you make on this budget? Any decisions you make on this budget can affect that five-year plan. So we would adjust it for revenues coming in. There could be, you know, a miracle solution at the state, and income tax does come in higher. Now, I'm not going to count on that. But, like I said, there could be grant funding for the radios for fire. Well, that changes how your outlook is on the forecast. And so every step you take each year, you adjust for that end game. And it would be irresponsible of me to let you ever get to that low of a fund balance. So every year, we're going to come back to you with what I call budget balancing measures because you can balance the budget in multiple ways. And so every year, we'll look at that forecast, we'll come up with a plan with what council wants for services, and direct that budget for the next year to fit those needs. But it's never going to let you fall off that cliff, right? We need to make the tough decisions each year.
Absolutely.
And it's going to be little pieces every year to adjust that pendulum.
Other than that, tell us how you feel.
Just saying.
Alderman Fagan?
So I, I do feel a little bit like we are at last year again because it's the same conversation. We're coming, you know, we're coming down to the wire, and I had said this last year as well, that, you know, I know this isn't common for government, but I would like to see, looking at the budget and starting out with a zero increase budget and building that budget, and then telling us, if you want to add the additional services, this is what it's going to cost. I appreciate that the FAC had done that with the quarter percent tax increase for the police officers because that broke that out. That's if you want to hire additional police officers, it's going to cost this quarter percent. But, as I say, I usually, I think this is what we did at the ninth hour last year as well, is we said, "We want the rate to remain the same." And what will it take to have the rate remain the same? And so everybody had to scramble at the last, at the last hour to put that together. And then, you know, it, we achieved that. We kept the rate the same from the previous year. So right now, I don't know what the rate is.
Talking about the tax?
The tax levy.
The tax levy, right.
I don't know what we're going to levy this year. So I don't know how that compares to last year. I think it was in the five-year plan that the city manager had sent out. I can't find the picture, but there was a picture that showed from 2006 to today. You know, there's only three, there were three groups that more than doubled their tax rate. That was the Park District, the city of DeKalb, and the School District. All the others went up 10%, 20%, but it was those three that went up double from 2006. And I don't know that that, I don't know anywhere else where your budget gets to double, you know, in a 10-year period.
For those who started, Austin, here?
On the?
Tax rate?
No.
It was a, it was a picture of the different, you know, you had the dollar, where your tax dollars go, and the rates that, and...
Oh, we have that for 2016 on here.
But you had a comparison that went back to 2006.
No, I only have 2016 and how it's broken. There's that dollar.
Yeah. But I think it was in, like I say, I think it might have been in the five-year plan. But again, that, and we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of things to accomplish. I think, you know, again, if we say we're going to keep the rate the same, and we want to accomplish certain things, then we start to take a hard look at it. As you said, Mr. Mayor, we cannot accomplish everything, and there may be years we do have to sacrifice certain things to achieve the goals we want to. I don't feel, I've not heard a single person come up and say they can't wait till we increase our taxes. I, you know, asked Mayor John Ray at the time to appoint me because I was tired of the increase in our taxes. So, I mean, that's where, you wanted some input? That's my input is, I would love to start out every single year saying, "The rate is the same. Build the budget around that, and then let's start talking and have our policy discussion about what do we want to achieve the next year."
I'd love to note that the property tax levy is on, for your November 13th meeting, so it is discussed in there, the difference from the current rate to the new rate, and how that investment rate returned. So you will have that in your packet.
Okay.
And, but the other point on the property tax levy is that is the, one area that Moody's has called out as a significant point that you should pay attention to, is that when looking at the Moody's downgrade, that you have a very, a continued recurring obligation for the police and fire pensions and the other IRF and Social Security and FICA that you have every year, and that Moody's recommendation did point out that having a stable revenue source, which they consider the property tax levy to be the most stable revenue source to support that. So you're aware that that was in the Moody's downgrade information.
And if I could just address Alderman Fagan's comment, if we start with a zero-based budget and build up from there, then in reality, you're starting by reduction because since the majority of our budget is people, based on wage increases, benefit increases. So in order just to stay status quo, and let's say the council says, "No property tax increase," or that, absorb that in the general fund, then you are reducing every time. You're not even maintaining status quo. And it goes back to, I think, what Director Talkington was saying. We need then to understand what are your, what are your priorities on service and service level?
Alderman Fagan?
At my, yeah. You're right about, I'm with Fagan on starting at zero, and you're right that it does go up because of our personnel, all right? But we should all, we should also think on increase of sales tax base, and that should increase also. So it's just not looking at personnel and cost, but also from development, money coming in. So it should be coming, in a perfect world, coming up like this. And if it does that, then we can keep at the zero, I mean, at the level levy that we were talking about, a budget line.
I think there's two things, and I want to, the second one, I want to go back to Alderman Fagan's comment to maybe get additional information. But the first point I would make, especially Alderman Fagan, as you relate to sales tax or development in general. One of the things, and we touched on this with the finance advisory committee, we really haven't gone in depth on the discussion here, staff is always extremely conservative on our revenue estimates, which is why, year after year, you, one of the reasons that you see us growing our general fund balance. You'll see the revenue projections come in higher than we budgeted for, and as staff, we also try very hard and look very close at expenditures. So many years, our expenditures are coming in under budget. So you can imagine revenues coming over budget, expenditures coming in budget, then we're building the general fund balance reserve that way. But keeping that conservative mindset in play, there are developments that sometimes, as an example, with the fiscal year '18 budget, that staff may be working on at this point, but may not have gone to the point of going through the development process or going public, and a development that may go to Planning and Zoning Commission, we have not budgeted that. So we are very conservative of, when you look at the revenues, that there could be developments coming online in 2018 that aren't even in this budget. And so when those do happen, that that is additional benefit. I'm trying to use a analogy, but it's additional benefit. So when you look at that five-year forecast, you have to keep in mind that those revenues, as well as the expenditures, are changing. And I think Director Talkington, you know, pointed out that you're looking at, or at least she has when we've talked to the FAC, that you have the one-year plan document, but then you're always adjusting every year because you don't get to that point of running that deficit. I think, and I can have a follow-up conversation after this meeting with Alderman Fagan to understand exactly the methodology you're talking about, because if I'm understanding, maybe then it's, you're saying, so let's use the police department as an example. Would you be looking at identifying or wanting to know what is the total cost for the police department for what the cost was in 2017, and then be able to provide the service either if it stays status quo or if you add the additional officers?
Well, if we were, so if we're talking just the levy, if we kept the levy the same. So in the previous, last year, we kept the levy the same, but we actually received more dollars because of the increase in EAV or, you know, additional, additional EAV. So, and as Alderman Fagan said, and that was also a point I wanted to make too, is as we bring on more development, we're going to have more revenue. And again, we're keeping the EAV, or we're keeping the rate, the tax rate the same, but we'll be collecting more dollars.
Okay. So just to understand, so are you saying then, keep the property tax rate the same?
Yes.
Okay. So you're not talking so much zero-based on the budgeting side, you're talking really on the property tax side?
Keeping the tax the same rate, yes.
We can, as we provide that to the council, I know the agenda items are in the Agenda Center folder, I haven't reviewed them yet. I don't know if we can modify the memo by Monday's meeting, but keep in mind at the council meeting this coming Monday, it's setting the ceiling. So the ceiling is that, per the FAC recommendation of lowering the assumption from 7.5% down to 7%, but we can provide that information. I totally understand what you're saying now.
Okay. And then just one other, I lost it, but, oh, the other thing I was going to say too is that as things change, as new technology comes online, again, we also want, it's part of our, you know, our five-year plan or whatever, we do want to talk about what are some of the services we want to offer? Are there things we don't want to offer anymore? I know that, again, all of our employees have looked for ways to save money, whether it's doing a group purchase with the county, the road salt, if it's, you know, sharing services, if it's sharing other items. It's things like that. And looking at, again, is technology going to be able to replace some things that we have expenditures for? We've investigated contracts, street sweeping and things like that. That wasn't beneficial to us. But it's those things to look at, and to look at where the services that we're providing, if there's a better cost effective, or if it's a service that we don't need anymore. And again, I'll say it again, somebody else said this to me, wasn't very popular with one of our constituents last night, but, you know, other people have asked, "Why do we have a municipal band?"
Why do we have what?
The municipal band. You know, again, it's only a $50,000, $60,000 expenditure, but not many communities have them. That's one reason why we have one, because not many do. It's something we offer the community, but again, is it something we should have? There's other things like that that we fund. So again, I'm not advocating to get rid of the municipal band, it's just a question to ask.
Thank you, Tony. Alderman Fanouk.
Well, if I may jump back to the property tax levy for a moment, you know, I want to remind folks that that is a relatively small portion of our overall budget, the property tax. You know, it's less than $8 million. And of a $95 million budget, that's less than 10% of the total. We have all these other taxes that we're dealing with also. So the estimated EAV would have to go up quite a bit, even to keep pace with what we're paying now on pensions. And so we do need to, you know, take a good look at that rate and keep that in mind, though, that it is such a relatively small part of the overall budget.
Alderman Jacobson?
There was a quote I saw today out of door in our meeting, and I want to read it real quickly. I know I took a picture of it because I knew it was going to come into play tonight. Let me one second here. Slower than I had hoped it would be. "We can't solve problems by using the same kind of thinking we used when we created them." Albert Einstein. That's what we're asking to do yet again. Trust staff, trust staff. Staff will take care of it. It'll all be done for us. All we have to do is say yes. Again, in terms of what we're looking at this year, not a single revenue reduction, or not a singles reduction in any line item has been proposed to us to discuss. When we talk about things like the municipal band, going through it line item by line item, understanding department by department what we're spending, and it doesn't necessarily have to be individual line item by line item. Again, I don't know what salt costs. I know we should probably have a discussion, does it make sense to keep paying salt out of MFT or come up with another revenue source for it? In not having that discussion, these policy discussions aren't coming to the table. And every year, the staff keeps getting paid. And every year, the tax bills keep going up. That's the same way of thinking that's gotten into, us into this mess. When we have to start having very difficult conversations, like, does it make sense to continue, if we cannot afford pensions without making increases, do we need to look at outsourcing? Maybe one of our major public service departments? What would that cost? What are the savings? What other communities do it? I know, and I am, we found out there are some that are doing it. What are the benefits of that? What are the pitfalls? Those are the discussions, policy-wise, we need to have, and we're not. Yet again, we say we're doing balance, budget balancing measures, and that comes on the backs of our taxpayers. Yet again, we're saying, "Hey, every man, woman, and child in DeKalb, you got to come up with $200 to support our staff's retirements." We don't care that you can't afford your own. We don't care that you could barely afford to pay your rent. We don't care that you're one of the poorest communities in the state. We don't care that you have one of the highest tax rates in the nation. We don't care that you have one of the lowest property values in the state. But we need you to give a little bit more to make staff more comfortable, because without it, you'll have no services. That's scare tactic. That's how staff, for years, for decades, for the last 100 years, has continued their salaries on a significantly upward curve while the rest of this community has suffered. And until we do something about that mentality, and I appreciate, if I were in the same position, again, human nature is to do what benefits you. Last year, the comment that Drew Iyer was, that the inmates or the crazies were running the asylum. It's still going on, at all levels, not just at our city, not just at our state, at all levels, it's still going on. The people that are in charge and telling us everything will be fine, and everything are going to be okay, are benefiting by their salaries and benefits continue to increase while the community continues to struggle. There's a problem with that. The check and balance is a city council that's well-informed and well understands how these things are going, so we can say, "Yes, is there a check in that service? Yes, is there some efficiency?" Because clearly, we're not being presented any by staff, zero this year. If we decide, yes, it's important for the police to have vehicles to get to calls, and they went out and bought Ferraris, our priority was met. They can get to calls in those brand-new $400,000 Ferraris. It's, if we didn't understand what was being spent, and we don't understand at the base level where some of those efficiencies can come from, if they're not being provided by staff, and we're not having any discussions about where that money can come from, it's a lost cause. We're wasting our time sitting in this room.
Did you see any efficiencies coming out of Finance Advisory Committee?
I don't know if they had the time to have those discussions. Again, for the most part, much as things have been done for a long time, the answers are provided, and it's a yes or no answer. There aren't choices. We had some very basic choices presented a couple months ago when we talked about MFT changes, about other things. We never had a substantive policy direction, and the decision was made for us, that it's all going to come out of a property tax. We didn't have that discussion. So I'm a bit confused as to where these policies are coming from. They're not coming from us, and they're not benefiting the people we serve. So where is this drive to create policy coming from? So, where is this drive to create policy coming from? Staff is claiming it's not them, it didn't come from us, someone's making decisions. And I really would like to see where in the building Oz's office is, so I can knock on that door and have the conversation with them, if it's not someone sitting in this room. But the reality is, this community cannot afford to pay anymore. That's the reality. So, to say that budget balancing measures are just going to come on the backs of taxes, no, the answer's no. That cannot continue to happen. So, yes, the reality is going forward, until the home values change, until the average income in this community changes, we are asking you to stay status quo or go the other way, because that's what we're asking our residents to do. And that's the reality they face in this community every day. And until we realize that as a city, both staff, both council, that that is the reality we face, these holes keep getting deeper and deeper and deeper and deeper, and we just keep doing it the same way, and we'll say, okay, let's raise taxes again to get us through this year.
Alderman Verbig.
And that's part of the challenges of...
That's part of the challenges of using comparables, trying to compare DeKalb to other municipalities for basis of judgment, although certainly, we have to have some kind of an idea of how we operate compared to others. State of Illinois is broken, so as we compare ourselves to other municipalities in the state of Illinois, it's one broken piece after another. What we really needed to start doing is comparing ourselves to out-of-state municipalities. What are they doing well? What are those examples that we can take to offer efficiencies to our taxpayers?
Okay. Couple of questions to clarify some things in my brain. On the bottom, on the last page of the FAC, in that paragraph where you say, after the adjustments for the IML and that part, when we're talking about fiscal year '17, are we talking about our fiscal year '17 or the state of Illinois fiscal year '17?
So, the difference, if it's FY 2017 in here, that's the city's '17. If it's MFY, that's for May 1 through April 30, is how IML looks at the figures from the state, which is different than the state's fiscal year, which is July 1 to June 30.
Okay. So, we have three different...
Correct.
Sort of time periods. The state income, do we get that? How do we get that? How do we receive that? On what base, what frequency? Is it a monthly thing?
It's monthly.
And is it like three months behind somewhat when they collect it? Or is it, you know, because we pay the state our income taxes by April, and, you know, there's payroll deductions out of everybody's paycheck unless, well, if they're a contract worker, then they're supposed to do their estimated payments. So, is it based on that as well?
So, essentially, it is all income taxes, whether you pay it in April, or there's people who do monthly payments, quarterly payments. It all goes into the local government distributed fund. So, the state is essentially holding the money in there because they use, they do kind of like short-term cash borrowing from it. And typically, income tax had been on a three to four-month delay, so they receive it, by the time they process it, turn it around to what municipality is, we'd receive it three or four months in delay. There was a point where they were almost seven months behind, probably four years ago now. However, with the most recent change that they made to reduce the receipts to the municipalities by 10% for the short period of time, they also said they'd escalate payments. So, they are paying us as soon as they receive it, on the per capita basis, less the 10% during these certain months, which we had accounted for that 10% already when we put this budget together.
Okay.
Now, the benefit the state was saying was that cities will receive 14 payments instead of 12 in one year. So, if you're on cash basis for budget and how you do your audit, then you'll receive 14 payments in one year. However, we do a modified accrual, and we will go back to accounting for 12 payments in one fiscal year. So, the accelerated payments from the state, it'll give us cash sooner, but it won't affect how we look at our fiscal year revenues, because we're trying to keep it in that accrual basis, 12 months of collections in every year.
And I believe in learning from the IML conference that there's going to be a 2% administrative fee assessed against that?
Not to income tax. So, the 2% administrative fee is already accounted for in your revenue projections, and that's on the home rule sales tax. So, what the state said is, we're not going to charge you for collecting the state sales tax, right? We receive a portion of that because that, the state set that tax. But for all of the home rule sales tax that we collect for all the municipalities, we're now taking 2% off the top as our administrative fee before we turn around and give you receipts. But we've accounted for that in our projections already.
Thank you. David?
Again, they owe us the, we had this discussion with Susanna Mendoza, the comptroller, and she assured us that they're not behind in payments, which they are, there's a backlog of about two months. So, it was our money that they owe us anyway. They've now said, instead of passing it through different accounts, it'll come as a direct pass-through, but they're taking 10%. So, they owe us those 14 full payments. They're going to give them all to us, but in reality, with the 10%, we're losing a payment and a half effectively, in terms of accruals that were owed to us from the state. They're taking that off the top at this point.
Right. The 10% is a temporary measure.
For the 14 payments.
Right.
So, 10% of 14 would be 1.4...
And as long as that's reflected in this...
They're cutting the payment.
Right. We've accounted for it.
As long as it's reflected in this budget.
I mean, it's really a negligible half a payment amount. In reality, it's a loss to us, but we will see it as a half a percent gain of this year, while the state hijacks another payment and a half off the top for finally agreeing to pay us on time.
Now be nice, David. Mike, did you have another question?
I did. To keep going, on the 2018 fiscal year for us, where it drops down to 23.5%, and the 9.1 million estimation there, does that, is that estimation include the 1% sales tax increase?
Yes. That's included in the budget.
That's included in...
So, whatever was included in the proposed budget that we gave you, so that includes that 1% home rule sales tax rate increase, I just adjusted from there. So, we started with what you've received in this document and adjusted for the property and then for the income tax.
Okay. So, you did that quickly. There's another question.
Any additional question? David?
Again, not necessarily a question, but we went through this last year, and we had to do it last minute, whereas now we have some more time and effort. I'd like to see a 5% of general fund list of options that we could do in efficiencies in the city. Obviously, they were total about a million and a half, that's going to help us with that fund balance and other things. Without a doubt, it has to stay at 25%. I mean, that's one of the prime directives this council has given staff, so in no way could it go down to 23 and a half, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, that's one of the consistent priorities this council has given. So, I realize this is a last-minute change, and it's going to require looking back through it and seeing where we can come up with it. In addition to that effort, I'd like to propose a 5% internal cut to our general fund budget and give us a menu of options of where we can start looking to make those service cuts or those cuts of fluff. Again, some of these things that we don't want to talk about are going to be on the table, public service funding and municipal band and some very difficult choices we're going to have to talk about. I'm not saying we'll go to the full 1 and 1/2% cuts, but let's start looking at where internally, to meet those demands, we could come up with about 5% out of this year's budget, a million and a half dollars, to have some discussions about, and leave that as our ceiling of cuts, and we'll go from there.
Alderman Fagan.
Molly, the other day when we were in the meeting, you had talked about other municipalities having a lower percentage for reserve.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you explained, it only took like two minutes, but could you just touch base on that a little bit for us?
Sure. So, I'll just talk about the City of Champaign, since that's where I came from. And to give you some background on the City of Champaign, they are the only AAA-rated city below IED. So, that's a high commission for that city. And some of the things that they've done, because they felt similar challenges to the City of DeKalb in declining enrollments, the university being one of their largest employers, Kraft is also a major employer, and they were purchased by another company, and so the shuffles that happened with that. So, they faced some big challenges, and they've managed to maintain that AAA bond rating. And what I think is the key that's helped them through the recession and those big changes is their two fund balance policies, which differ from how yours is. The first one is, they budget recurring expenditures at 98.5% of their recurring revenues. So, you're leaving a 1.5% cushion in recurring revenues, which helps you like weather the storm of an income tax projection change. The second thing they do is they have a 10% unassigned general fund balance, but it's of expenditures minus transfers. So, it's really of what you would call operating expenditures. And so, their fund balance, when we look at it, is usually around $5 million, and their general fund budget's about $82 to $83 million, where, you know, we're targeting closer to $10 million for the 25% of expenditures with transfers. I think that has been a big help for the Save Champaign, it helped them weather a storm. But the key on that one is really the fact that there's two policies. To have the fund balance at the 10% of expenditures minus transfers is only really benefited by the fact they budget recurring expenditures at 98.5% of recurring revenues. And so, they're always looking at the difference between what's a recurring expense and a one-time expense.
Yeah. Sounds like a good idea. Thank you.
Alderman Verbig.
And I would echo Alderman Jacobson's request, but I would also like to see something more moderate, like $750,000, is that, that's 2.5% instead of only 5% please?
Yeah, I'd like to see the 5% options...
Right.
To that ceiling. If we decide we can only cut $100,000, that's a reality we have to face.
Right.
I'd like to see what the options up to 5% would look like as a ceiling of cuts.
Same.
And then we can moderate what we feel is, again, based on priorities, hey, we need to deal with police boots on the ground right now, this may have to go.
Right.
I remembered my other question.
Oh, yes, Dave, or Mike.
And off the top of my head, because I don't remember in here, the TIF transfer for 2018, was that the full amount, or was that the first year of weaning?
Oh, no, 2018 is the same amount as FY '17. The first year to phase herself off would be in FY '19.
Okay. That's what I... Okay. So, it's 9:25, and I don't want to take a whole long time, but the way, the way I see it, and I'm going to, oh, real estate taxes. We levy for a dollar amount. So, when you talk about rate, that gets kind of confusing, because we levy for a dollar amount to cover those pension costs. And that rate can go up and down. If our EAV goes up and we levy for the same dollar amount, the rate goes down. Okay? But the, you know what I'm saying? But if the EAV goes down and we still levy for the same dollar amount, the rate goes up. So, in your head, I know everybody talks about the rate, but we have to think about it and what we are paying with that as such, because even though we may levy for more dollars, if our EAV, if the value of our property has gone up, the rate's going to not go up that same amount. It's going to look less, because it's spread out overall over that property. Does that make sense?
Oh, I understand.
Okay. Okay. So, it just was confusing to me, because when you start talking about the rate, we need to hold the rate while, not necessarily on that rate part.
I think that's a policy decision, if you guys want to shift it, because I've been in communities where we levy to the dollar. I've also been in communities where you levy to the rate, and it's a matter of really getting ahead of where you think the EAV is going to be. So, the City of Champaign levies to a rate, but what we do, where you were talking about the ceiling next meeting, is we put in, so for 2016 tax levy at Champaign, the rate is 1.3152. And so, I put in the most likely for property taxes at a 5.2% increase in EAV, because if you've been to Champaign lately, the Green Street is going straight up with student housing. I put my optimistic at 8.1% of EAV growth. So, we ask council, what we do is we budget the most likely, we ask council to approve the optimistic, and we put in a fill-in-the-blank ordinance that will allow staff in April, when you have like one week, to turn around, signing off on that you agree with the final property tax levy numbers, to amend to that rate. So, the reason why we adopt everything to the optimistic is you can adjust back down to the rate, you cannot adjust up. So, thankfully, I put in an 8.1% EAV as optimistic, because they ended up coming in at 8% that year, and we're able to bring down to the 1.3152 rate, but be able to capture the growth. So, it's really a policy decision of council to start thinking about, do you want to continue to levy for the dollars, or do you want to look at a different way of doing that property tax levy? And we could go over that in a lot more detail. But I've done it both ways, and it works both ways. It's really a choice of your...
I don't know if that fill-in-the-blank process that you just described achieves, achieved that in Champaign, or would achieve that in DeKalb. But what I hear Alderman Favor and Alderman Jacobson arguing is what we continue to hear as a council from our constituents, no more increase in our property taxes, no more $100, $200, whatever on that $100,000, $150,000 home? $150,000 home. And so, I hear that as a overriding potential concern and an item that we may want to seriously consider as we tweak this budget. The other thing is the proposal of the 2 and 1/2 to 5% cut in our general fund, which would assure us the $10 million fund reserve. Is that correct? Is that a proper assessment of what we're looking at?
Yes.
That is something I think that we would probably want to address also. Have I got that right, Alderman Jacobson?
It will address at that level, of course, at 5%. It will more than address that gap.
Well, that's why the 2 and 1/2% that Mike Verbig came up.
Even the 2 and 1/2% will be more than enough to make up that gap, it looks like. Again, the question is, what other options out there do we have to start looking at contracting some of our expenses? It goes above and beyond that 25, well, we have to meet that goal, which we will through some cuts. I think it's important to have an option, a list of options for the council to discuss and start to have conversation on of what niceties we have left in this budget. And there are a few, at least, that we have to decide, are they priorities? Is it something we want to keep going forward? Is it something we... they priorities? Is it something we want to keep going forward? Is it something we want to change our view on how we're looking at things on? And from there, see where it gets us. See if it gets us a little bit more in the pot to start focusing efforts elsewhere, whether they be on roads or infrastructure.
But to your point, we need to do it. We need to do it by the end of the year. To your point, Tony, we don't want to be in a situation where we make a knee-jerk response at the last minute simply because we have to do it. It appears that we do have the time. We have the mechanism to get that done. Period. Alderman Verbi?
Back to the levy, and perhaps I missed it. Do we have an update from the library on our loan to them?
The last I heard was when I updated the FAC, is that they have not received the grant funding, so the levies remain the same as the year before. And that's what's included when you see on your November 13 tax levy. It said the libraries remain the same.
We got that letter yesterday, Anne Marie, from Emily Faulkner.
Then I haven't seen it.
Okay. And I think those numbers were the same?
I believe it's the same, but we'll, we'll double check.
Yeah, double check that, yeah. Got a letter that she sent us, she sent it to me, and I didn't know if she sent it to anybody else, and it was dated November 3, which was what, Friday, and I just got it yesterday.
Yeah.
And so hopefully, that number is the same.
Thank you.
Can we reach out to the library and/or the state and see what the status? And we have a budget now. We were told once the budget was there that it would be quick. It's now been several months, and we still don't have any indication of whether or not the state's going to make good on their commitment to that project.
And that's a liability that the library has to the city of about, what, $500,000? Was that, was that the number, do you recall?
I believe it's about $500,000.
Yeah, about $500,000, yes. Yeah, we're very cognizant of that. Thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Windfall. Anything else?
No, it was a pass-through.
No, I know.
It's on the taxpayers' backs. It's not on our
Yeah, we don't owe them, I mean, it's not a liability they owe back to us or anything to us.
Oh, okay.
It's in the millions. It's not
Oh, right.
$100,000.
Okay, right.
It's they had to take out a line of credit to fund, we're paying a line of credit annually.
Right, right.
It's basically the interest that's non-refundable back to the taxpayer, that the taxpayers are footing the bill, because the state didn't make good on
That's right. That's right. I beg your pardon. Yeah. Okay, any, any further discussion? Yes?
Mayor, I just want to make sure that we have direction from the majority of the council to look at 2.5% to 5% reduction in the general fund. We heard 3, but I just want to make sure this is the consensus of the council, and we'll go in the direction of what the council wants.
There's a senior consensus shaking head, shaking head.
Yeah. And what would it look like if we did not do
You agree to that?
the police officer, the, the part to full-time?
Give us all range options.
Yeah.
I mean, if you, if you rolled that back out of it, there's your zero-sum budget, for the most part, if I'm understanding.
Zero levy.
Zero, you know, kind of status quo from the year before.
We, we would include a palette of options for you to look at, and I think for the timing of this, since today is November 7, we're going to have the joint meeting with the FAC November 16. We would, we're going to need some time to prepare that, so we would have that for your November 27 meeting. So this would be the public hearing on the budget at the city council meeting, and this would be the first reading of the ordinance where we would have that palette of options, unless you wanted to schedule. It's going to actually be hard to have anything before that point, because we've got Thanksgiving coming up and just the timing of getting the agendas out. So we will provide a palette of options for you to look at that may include some of the items that you mentioned here, which would be policy decisions. As an example, whether you want to continue to fund the municipal band. There are other items, other programs that the city funds. We made a suggestion or recommendation last year to make some external reductions to outside organizations, and that was not embraced by the council. So we will, we'll put a number of items on there, as well as this would have an impact on service delivery, because as Director Tockington said, you have to look at what is the level of services. If you go with the assumption, as an example, that we're moving forward with the police officers, and that's not an option, if you take the police department off the table at 36% of the budget, I already went through the breakdown, that police and fire, 65% of the budget. You've got public works at 35%, 75% between those big three. If you take our largest department out of that reduction, then you're putting a bigger burden. You have to look at some of the other larger departments. So we will, we'll work with department heads to provide you options.
Let me interject something here. And I want to ask Alderman Jacobson a direct question. If we're talking about 5%, are you talking about this palette of selected cuts, selected cuts driven by staff, or would you be more comfortable with an across-the-board 5% cut in the general fund?
I'm interested to see what options we have.
Okay. I, I just want to be very careful that we don't come to the 11th hour with all the cuts that are recommended on this palette of cuts, that we, that, that there is the thought that, well, this is what staff wants us to do, and they're spoon-feeding us, and we've got no choice but to vote yes or no. Whereas the best way, in my opinion, would simply be 5% across the board.
And Mayor, if you do a 5% across the board, then you definitely are reducing, you're reducing your service delivery, and then you can't move forward with the police department, because that would require a 5% cut to the police department. What I would take, I mean, unless you want to go in that direction, we're going to take the various comments that were made by council members.
Okay.
We took detailed notes. Our goal is not to back you in a corner. I mean, our goal is probably to present the range, even greater than the 2.5, greater than the 5%, and then have you look at it to determine what you want. And in reality, I think that's addressing Alderman Jacobson's point, that you're setting the policy.
Right.
You're determining what direction the council's going in and what services we're providing.
I'll withdraw that thought. I'll withdraw that comment. I, it may have been a little bit too hasty. I'm just trying to get to this whole point of, we need to do something. Do you think I'm too hasty, David?
No. It's a difficult conversation.
And, and where I'm going is, you know, we want to do, we, we want to realize that we have a timeframe, and I'm just so sensitive to the comments here that we're simply doing something similar and in the same fashion as we've done in the past, which has netted very little satisfaction on this council. And I hope that by the end of the year, that we have reached some consensus, even though we may have disagreed with certain points, that we have some consensus that we, to the best of our ability, as a city council serving the greater good in this community, have come up with a budget that is livable and is doable and is predictable. Alderman Norrico?
In taking a look at the options, certainly, staff needs to have an open mind, and we as council members need to have an open mind as well. And I hesitate to say, you know, don't do, but I'm going to do that.
Don't do what?
You know, don't, don't, you know, present. I, I know social service funding, you know, has come up for discussion, and not only remembering the individuals who came forward regarding that last year, but also the feeling of the council. If you want to propose that as one of the cuts, I would be careful in the amount, just because for, I know for some of the agencies, if you say, you know, starting in January, you will have no funding from the city, it would have a serious impact. If, on the other hand, you want to come forward and say, we propose a pool of funds, we're reducing the total amount by X percent, we're proposing a pool, and the council has, you know, more input into the amount to each one, or perhaps not, you know, there might be one or two that wouldn't be funded, that would, that would be, I think, a more reasonable approach.
To follow up on your comment, Alderman Norrico, we're looking for direction from the council. So we're going to throw it right back at you right now, is you tell us, are social services off the table, or do you want to set the parameters in regards to certain items to include or not include? Well, I was
Alderman Favor?
Yeah, I knew I would.
Thanks for opening that up.
So there was, I don't know if it was from the budget, it was, came up in the budget meeting last year. Two things. One is, are there any social services that we support that haven't made their annual reports or
Yeah.
repeatedly, number one. And number two, are there other services that we support that are supported by a larger organization? And I believe one of those potentially is Ben Gordon Center, is supported by Northwestern.
Mayor, can I
Alderman Verbi?
Everything's on the table for me.
Alderman Jacobson?
Again, as difficult as that discussion is, I think we do have to take a look on case by case in terms of, again, I know in seeing some of them, our funding is a half of a percent of their overall budget. Is it a reduction? Yes. But the reality is, they could probably survive it pretty comfortably. In terms of those organizations, especially Ben Gordon now, that are part of a multi-billion-dollar
Oh, yeah.
conglomerate of medical, they're no longer local, they're no longer a local nonprofit. They are part of a much bigger entity. I think that at some point, we have to discuss whether or not it makes sense for us, with our $100 million budget, dollar budget, to be subsidizing a billion-dollar corporation in the community. In terms of some of the other social services funding we've done, it was directed to try to make certain and distinct differences 10 or 15 or 20 years ago, and we've shifted the focus of a lot of those efforts to other beneficial organizations, whether it be Camp Power, whether it be other efforts that we're doing internally. And in reality of saying, hey, we may need to cut some of these off, I think it would be callous of us to do so without giving them another option. And I think that's something we have to discuss. As we've talked about prior to, there may be some opportunity to allow those organizations to go out and use our municipal parking lots during Corn Fest to raise some funds. There may be some opportunities locally that they could use better, be better supported by the city as a multiplier in their fundraising efforts, rather than taking a check and using it on whatever they need to and not going and stepping up and doing more. So I think, yes, unfortunately, it does have to be on the table, and we have to get into a substantive discussion. Is the answer, should we cut public service funding? No, I thought that was what we were presented with last year, and I thought it was an appropriate way to do it. Is there a conversation that we could have relating to public service funding? Obviously, some of it's CDBG, which is a restricted funding source anyway. Some of it, there's other options and opportunities we have there. So I, I would like to see it stay on at this point, to have the discussions, to see how we can tweak it and make it more valuable to us.
So keep them, keep, keep them on the table as a possibility of cutting.
Ideally, yes.
Joe Allen, you wanted to say something?
Couple, couple of points. Chief Lowry spent a good portion of his meeting yesterday at the police station, addressing the crime in the Antigone North area, talking about how you can't police your way out of that problem, that impoverished people often resort to desperate measures. And many of the people who have issues in that area need and rely on the social service, social services that are provided by the city in two forms. So the Community Development Block Grant Fund has made some of those changes that have required us to cut people who previously used to rely on those services.
We zero-funded a couple.
And we've directed those folks to the social service funding, that $150,000 that you set aside. And we know that that social service funding has had applicants and recipients that we're not as happy with, the way they reported, or because they have other funding sources. So this year, as we, as we reported to the council in our, in our communication to you a few weeks ago, we are, we had advised people of the $150,000 social service grant that we would be opening that up for further consideration, because for a lot of years, it's kind of been the same group of 11 or 12 people going after that money. And we wanted to make sure that people knew that we're coming from CDBG, you should apply for this one. You, you didn't qualify, and you have a need, and you didn't meet HUD's new guidelines, but why don't you go try for those funds over here? It's going to be more competitive. We're going to be looking for applicants that are going to be better served by that $150,000 fund. So that's what we sent out within the last month. We expect the deadline to receive those applications is November 17. So that's next Friday. I don't know whether we're going to have, you know, 20 applications compared to the 11 or 12 for $300,000, or if we're going to have 14 or 15 applications, you know, and I don't know how hard our job is going to be. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, because I think that's going to have an impact on the number of people that may come to a meeting if we're talking about social service cuts.
So everything's on the table, with the exception of police. What about fire?
I didn't hear that. I, I heard everything's on the table.
Everything's on the table.
Everything's on the table.
Everything's on the table. Okay. Any further discussion? Yes, Alderman Jacobson?
I just wanted to say, because he looks awful and half asleep, happy birthday, Gene. It is Gene's birthday. He's sick. He's been with us all night, quiet.
Happy birthday.
So happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Gene. From the fourth ward, right? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Adjourned.